And if you would join us, please, for a moment of silence. Thank you. First up this evening on the agenda is the Agenda Approval. Second. All those in favor, please sit down and say aye.
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to public hearings. We have two public hearings. We'll have a public hearing on proposed historic designations this evening. And I will turn to our town attorney to conduct the public hearings for us.
Thank you, Mayor. As Mayor mentioned, there will be two public hearings tonight. The following rules and procedure are going to apply to these hearings. A public notice of each hearing was published in the newspaper and posted on the town bullets and boards and in accordance with statutory requirements for the subject matter. A copy of the public notice has been filed with the town clerk for entry into the official record of the hearing. The town clerk will report all oral comments in a concise and brief manner. Written statements shall be reported in a similar manner and made part of the record of the hearing and shall be submitted in full to the town clerk. Please limit your comments to matters relevant to the issue and to a time period of three minutes. A five-minute exception will be made, however, if there's a spokesperson speaking on behalf of a group or if your statement has been submitted in writing to the town clerk. All speakers must come to the microphone and state your name, and also, your comments will be taped. There shall be no debates. The first public hearing will then please come to order. This hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider the following: a proposed historic designation in regards to 2306 North Virginia Deret Trail, the Smith Cottage. Nobody signed up to speak, so I'll call anyone who would like to. Please, please come to the mic and identify yourself.
Questions, any comments from the board?
I have one. The RB Roland House on West Hayman, a report from the North Carolina Department of Cultural Resources, what we get regarding all these things, basically states, quote, "The Roland House does not appear to be a good candidate for a local historic landmark designation. Due to the loss of feeling, association, setting, and location with the 1984 move and the loss of physical integrity and with later alterations, given its lack of antiquity, there is low probability for intact, significant archaeological resources to be associated with this property." Is this something we have to abide by, or is that just...
That's actually the next public hearing.
Did you tape that? I'm okay.
Okay, so we'll hold, so for the, bring that up on the next one, but for the Smith Cottage. Any questions, if not, a motion would be in order. Approved by adopting the ordinance designating the Smith Cottage as a historic landmark. So we have a motion, and the second was from Michael. Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
The second public hearing will now come to order, and this hearing is called for the purpose of the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners to consider another proposed historic designation, the location of this property, 418 West Hayman Boulevard, known as the Hayman House. And nobody, again, has signed up to speak, so I will, again, call for comments if you'd like. Any comments, I'll turn it over to the board.
Okay, thank you. So, what you're referencing, questions about the letter to Meredith, is that what you were trying to do?
Yeah, from the Department of Cultural Resources.
And I don't know if you can speak to that, because it seems, actually, that the letter contradicts itself, so to speak.
Sending it to that office is just part of the process. Those comments are advisory and non-binding. For example, the structure at this house in the town last year that you all designated, the state had similar comments, they were not supportive of designating it. So it's their opinion. You don't have to follow those, it's just support that communication for the pack-up.
And there's my question, whether it was bound by this rule?
No.
Nothing said, um...
I trust you guys.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, then a motion would be in order.
We'll make a motion that we approve the Roland House as a historic landmark.
I'll second that.
On Hayman Street?
The Hayman House.
It's referenced, I'm, no reason, it's referenced two different ways, but specifically for the ordinance, the ordinance adoption.
Reference to the, the, West Hayman Boulevard.
Okay, everybody's comfortable with the motion in the second? Any questions or discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. And thank you to our Historic Landmarks Committee for working on these two properties and bringing them forth to us. Next on our agenda is the first time set aside this evening for public comment. This is an opportunity for anyone that's with us this evening to bring any comments they have before the board. We do ask that if you're speaking as an individual, when we call on you, you would approach the podium, identify yourself by name and address, and please keep those comments to three minutes. If you're speaking on behalf of a group, same thing, when we call on you, please come forth to the podium and identify yourself by name, the group you're representing, and we ask if you would keep those comments to five minutes if you're representing a group. We have a list that was here to sign up from. I'll call from the names on the list first, but if you didn't sign up, no problem, we'll call from you after we work through the list of names. First, welcome Ron and Tiny Curtis, sorry, Ron. Welcome, back from a big vacation, right?
We are. My name is Ron Curtis. My wife and I live at 1817 Bay Drive. We're here tonight on behalf of the North Carolina Alliance Visually Impaired Fishing Tournament. We have been here to speak to you before. Our long-winded speakers could not be here tonight, so some years ago, our local visually impaired board created a plan to appreciate and honor people that are very special to us. This year, someone very special has met with us on several occasions and made recommendations that has resulted in two grant receptions. The grants allowed us to replace our computer equipment and software programs that we use when we plan and conduct our tournament. This year, after the hurricane, we decided to go forth with the tournament, again, had a successful tournament with about 300 visually impaired game in our community to enjoy and have an experience that is not in their normal lives. On behalf of the North Carolina Alliance Visually Impaired Fishing Tournament, we would like to present the Lacy and Ness Press Now Poll Award to Mayor Davies. Thank you very much for your help.
Thank you. Nice surprise. I was happy to do it. Thank you very much. Let's go back safely. Well, I wasn't prepared for that, but that was really nice, that they, when they came several years ago and shared the video with the tournament. If you haven't been involved or had the opportunity to go see what they do, it's absolutely amazing with this fishing tournament, and they do have a video on their website that highlights it, and it's just something that kind of captured my heart to see what happened, and so I was really happy to assist them this year, it's such a worthwhile cause. Okay, we'll move next. Howard Kimball, welcome.
Thank you. I want to thank the mayor and the commissioners for allowing me to speak a little bit tonight. My name is Howard Kimball, I live at 803 Sportsman Drive here in KDH. I want to talk a little bit about the dog issue. I cannot understand why so many of our residents want to let our beach go to the dogs. I have no problem with responsible dog owners, but as you know, all dog owners are not responsible. I have witnessed dogs taking a dump on the beach and the owner kicking sand over it instead of picking it up. I did not comment on this because I did not want to get involved in a confrontation with the owner. Let's remember, the owners can go to Kitty Honker and Egghead if they want to let their dogs run wild. I think our beaches should be for people first. They are the ones that support our local businesses. I believe Kill Devil Hills is unique in having a beach where visitors and citizens can go without being bothered by running dogs, or dogs running wild, excuse me. If our Board of Commissioners want to open the beaches year-round, then I recommend that we hire two enforcement officers for the summer to enforce our leash law, just for the beach during the summer months, because that's when we seem to have more problems with the dogs on the beach than anything else. So, thank you very much for your time and listening to that little complaint. Thank you.
Thank you, Howard.
Next is Deborah Menacucci. That's our bear system.
It's a mouthful, that name. My name is Deborah Menacucci, I reside at 206 Clamshell Drive in Kill Devil Hills. I want to thank you so much for letting me voice my concerns this evening about the Outer Banks Pro-Wash in Kill Devil Hills. I spoke at the last Commissioners' meeting, letting you know that the car wash was too loud. I had let you know that although the owner, Mr. Hatchell, had turned down the volume of the speaker, it could still be heard at my home, four properties away. I am here again this month to let you know that I can still hear the beeping, and please drive forward every time a car goes through. Although it is quieter, silence is what I want. When we bought our home 15 years ago, you never heard the car wash because the directions were given out via a digital readout. For whatever reason, about three years ago, Mr. Hatchell put in a speaker system to give out directions. I complained to the Kill Devil Hills Police Backroom and was told the decibel readings coming from the car wash were where they were supposed to be. I called Mr. Hatchell and spoke to him. He told me he would turn the speakers and would put up plastic strips at the back of the car wash to help block the sound. He never did either, and now here we are, three years later, still hearing that annoying beeping, and please drive forward. I appreciate the fact that Mr. Hatchell has had the maintenance man turn down the speakers and has installed plywood to minimize the noise. However, I can still hear the beeping, and I am at my wit's end. I am quite annoyed to note that Mr. Hatchell hasn't even had the manners to return any calls from Captain Evans, he has had the maintenance man call. My husband does a pretty good-sized Christmas light display to music, and when one neighbor complained to the police, we went out and bought an FM transmitter for the music so we can turn down the speakers and still let people driving by hear the music. We did it because it was the right thing to do. We did it without question because we want to keep everyone happy. I don't understand how Mr. Hatchell can care so little. I don't understand why Mr. Hatchell wasn't forced to install an FM transmitter after my last complaint to the Commissioners. I am well aware that the police are going to tell you that the decibel readings are below the noise ordinance, but I also know that it states that if a noise bothers more than one person of normal hearing sensitivities, then it is in violation of the noise ordinance. I complained at the last meeting and gave you a letter from another neighbor. I also know that Reece Stecker wrote you a letter to each of you, and his wife wrote a different one to Mr. Hatchell. Since that is more than one person, why hasn't the noise been fired? And this evening, I have come with neighbors because we are all tired of it. How much more time are we going to waste at the Kill Devil Hills Police Department before you guys do the right thing and make Mr. Hatchell install an FM transmitter? How about you guys come by my place on a nice Saturday afternoon after a storm and see how annoying it is to hear the beeping all day long because there's a line out to the bypass to use the car wash? Perhaps you'd like to join my family for a nice family dinner inside, but you can't do that because I hear the beeping in my house, too. Maybe come out one night and lay in the yard and watch a meteor shower? Nope, people do wash their cars at 2:00 a.m. If we ever wanted to sell our home, I would hate to have a potential buyer hear that noise. They would never buy the house knowing that the beeping wasn't going anywhere. I've had company comment about the beeping. Are you please starting to get my point? I am over it. I am asking the Commissioners and the mayor to please make Mr. Hatchell install an FM transmitter by the end of the year so we can finally have some peace and quiet in our neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Thank you.
Next is Rose, Rose Hudgens, welcome.
My name is Rose Hudgens, I live at 208 West Third Street. I'm right behind that car wash also, and I also own property on 200 Clamshell, which is directly behind the property of the car wash, and that's my rental property, and my concern is my tax value's going down because of the noise problems. I wouldn't be able to sell the house on Clamshell for the property value because of the noise. I'm positive if a real estate agent came over, they would not be able to show my property because of the noise. It is constant. Excuse me, one second. Not prepared. I didn't write down anything, I came free-form. But, my tenant that lives at 200 Clamshell did write, "To whom it may concern, I'm writing this letter on behalf of 200 Dolly Street. I apologize that I was not able to make it to this meeting this afternoon. Even though I'm new in the neighborhood, I understand there is a need to change the car wash policies. I wish the car wash would turn off the sound or down. The car wash disrupts our daily activities for not being able to enjoy an open window in my house to the constant noise all throughout the night. It would be nice to have a home environment free of this excessive noise. Thank you for your prompt action in addressing these concerns." It is signed by my two tenants that live directly behind that street. I really wish that you would consider using the same equipment that they do use on Clamshell, and everyone should go past Clamshell and see the house, the Christmas house, they're also doing a wonderful food drive over on Clamshell. When you drive up to their house, you can stay in your car and you put your radio on to what they tell you to put it on, and all the noise is in your car. It's not outside, even though you, it's Christmas music. It's not loud, it's in your car. The same concept could be used at a car wash. I've never, ever been to a car wash that has noise. Never. It's very weird to me that there's that noise, and I have lived in that house on 208 West Third Street for 27 years, and the last five years have been awful with the noise. So please consider using that new technology. There'd be no reason why he couldn't afford to buy it, since he has a business. He could afford to buy that technology, he could write it off on his taxes and make the neighborhood happier. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everett?
Everett? Yes, sir. Welcome.
I like little animals, but I'm opposed to any animals being on the beach at Kill Devil Hills. And if a dog bites a person, we don't know whether they've had all their Ray-Bans shots or not, and the owner might not own up to the fact that that's his or her dog, and that would cause the town of Kill Devil Hills to be irresponsible, and the town of Kill Devil Hills may even be sued. And I don't want to see more work for the lifeguards of the police department. I think the lifeguards are there to watch after people, not after animals biting someone or scratching someone, so I think it would be more work for the lifeguards and the policemen. And I, dogs are not necessarily clean. They leave a mess on the beach, the owner is not going to properly dig a hole and clean it up the way that it should be done. And someone told me they had a list of 100 people or more that signed for the dogs on the beach. Well, I questioned that list, and I could probably get a list of 300 or 400 people opposing it, because the beach is not a place for dogs. I believe dogs can smell food, and if someone's trying to eat, they bring the lunch down there, and they're eating, and the dogs could be a nuisance and interfering with them. And I don't like to see dogs loose running around on the beach that would knock little children down, or people like myself who was crippled. So, I think that for hygiene purposes, I think dogs should never be on the beach at any time, and I would like to see the Kill Devil Hills ordinances relating to animals remain the SS.
Thank you. Next is Reece, sorry, I can't reach your last name. Reece?
Stecker.
Stecker, welcome.
Thank you. My name's Reece Stecker, I live on 1816 Seminole Street. I've got two letters to read, I'm going to try to do it in under three minutes, but it's going to be tough, but I'm also here for my wife as well, and I'm also going to do something she told me not to do, but everybody needs to know what's going on. Move forward. That's what Debbie and Rose, and it's 10 times louder than that. Yeah, all day long, 24/7, I am at, well, I'm going to read my letter, the letter will address it, but it's 24/7, seven days a week, 2:00 in the morning, 6:00 in the morning, when there's a storm, and cars are muddied up, or rain, or the hurricane, oh my gosh, it's unbelievable. It's unbelievable that it goes on. But my wife wrote Mr. Hatchell a letter on the 6th of October, I'm going to read real quick. Dear Hatchell Concrete, I'm a full-time resident of Kill Devil Hills, I've lived with above residents for 16 years. Over the years, I've watched the neighborhood develop and increase in number of year-round residents, for the most part, the neighborhood is quiet. Depending on which way the wind blows, what day of the week it is, we hear traffic or the ocean crashing on the shore from our house. In the past year, a new sound has become quite noticeable, a beeping sound. The sound is not small and diminutive, but rather loudly and amplified. I understand we live rather close by a busy highway and a reasonable amount of traffic noise will be heard, although I am not surprised, although I am surprised at how clearly I can hear the persistent beeping sound that comes from your car wash. In fact, the sound can be heard from the back bedroom of my house 10 lots from your car wash with windows closed. During a bike ride down Clamshell one day, my daughter and I stopped at Apache Street, and we could hear the beeping 17 lots from where your car wash is. On occasion, I can hear verbal instructions that come from your car wash as well, but not too often. I would guess that the house is close to your car wash, can hear the verbal commands quite clearly, which they can. According to Chapter 130 of the Kill Devil Hills Town Code, the definitions are as follows: I don't want to go through them all, but noise, any sound that annoys, disturbs humans, which causes to have an adverse psychological or physiological effect on humans. Number 11, noise disturbance, any sound which endangers, injures, the safety, health of humans, animals, and animals, a noise that disturbs a reasonable person with normal sensitivities. This is in the Town Code. Number 21, unreasonable, loud, disturbing, or excessive noise, any sound which because of its volume level, duration, or character disturbs, discomforts, or injures and dangers the health, peace, and safety of a reasonable person with normal sensitivities. I do realize that the decimal level recorded by town officers did not meet the standard listed in the Town Code. I also realize that the purpose of the noise coming from your car wash is not to annoy and disturb anyone. As a twice-a-year user of your car wash, I do understand what the noise is trying to accomplish, give the patron clear instructions. I just feel that the noise is unreasonable and excessive. I am hoping that there might be some remedy to meaningfully reduce, eliminate the beeping and voice commands coming from your car wash. Is there a way to muffle, lower, soften the noise, make it less intrusive? Is there a possibility to make visual cues that the patrons can easily understand? Perhaps a wide line can be painted on the floor of the car wash that indicates where the front car wheels be placed, and I presumably, other neighbors would greatly appreciate consideration of any other options to lessen or eliminate the prominent noise coming from your car wash. I'd be so grateful for any compromise, thank you for your time, sincerely Jennifer Stecker. Just like with Debbie and Rose, Mr. Hatchell never got back. Okay, on November the 16th of this year, I sent an email to every single one of y'all up front there, and, you know, it does bother me a little bit that it's been, it's been just about a month, and I haven't gotten one response, I mean, not even a response, hey, thanks for your interest, and, you know, we appreciate your concerns, we'll look into it. It disappoints me, I mean, you guys, I voted for a few of y'all, it'd been nice to at least get an email back, hey, we got your email, but anyway. So, if y'all didn't read it, I'm going to read that very quickly. Unfortunately, I was unable to attend the monthly meeting earlier this week in support of our neighbor's Debbie who got, who are trying to get the Hatchell Car Wash Megaphone turned off. I am blown away that Mr. Hatchell has not already been made to turn things off. I could not imagine having to hear that thing up close 24/7 as her friends on the east end of Clamshell in Durham. I can hear it loud and clear when the west side window at our house is open. We are nearly a half mile, we are nearly a half mile from the car wash. I hear it at 5:00 a.m. when I'm leaving for work. I hear it at 2:00 in the morning if I go to the bathroom, seven days a week. What I hear is half as loud as what the folks on Clamshell and Dolly Street hear. I could not imagine trying to sell a property on the east end of Clamshell or Dolly Street as that would be impossible if potential buyers were able to hear the speaker at the car wash. There are two things that I am absolutely certain of, there's actually three, I'll get to that at the end. Number one, Mr. Hatchell would never want to live with an ear shot of his car wash, it would not tolerate it in his neighborhood, nor would his neighbors. Number two, and I don't mean disrespect by this, not one of the Kill Devil Hills Commissioners would want to live with an ear shot of the car wash, nor would any of y'all tolerate it in your neighborhood. We pay property taxes and have the right to live in a neighborhood free of an obnoxious commercial operation that disturbs our peace 24/7, seven days a week. I not only speak for myself, my family, but for the whole neighborhood, when I ask that the Kill Devil Hills Board of Commissioners act on and eliminate the situation immediately. This has gone on for far too long. Thank you, Reece Stecker. Thank you, Reese Stecker. And I know that Debbie has been, has been trying for I don't know how long. And I just don't understand why nothing's happened. And then number three that I'm absolutely certain of, and I'm absolutely certain of, if I was a realtor and if I was in, I couldn't live there. I'd have to move. But you call the realtor to come over and the realtor wants to show your house to somebody. If the realtor had brains, the realtor would, would schedule the showings around, oh geez, when is it least likely that they're gonna hear that noise? You would schedule around, and if the people heard the noise and asked, what's that? And found out that that noise went on twenty-four seven, seven days a week, they would never, never buy the property. So it's killing the property value, I mean, all the way around. I mean, you know, I know Kill Devil Hills, you know, it's different on some other beaches. There's a little more that goes on in our neighborhood. That's why we live there. We're not southern shores. But I mean, even, even if people of Kill Devil Hills deserve better. I mean, this is crazy. It's, it's completely intolerable. And I don't hear half as loud as what they hear. I couldn't imagine what they're going through right now. Anyway, it would really be nice if, if the suggestion they have is, is, is a no-brainer. But if that doesn't work, then in my opinion, it should just, just be turned off. We didn't need something to tell us how to wash our cars. The car wash I went through growing up, you'd have a giant megaphone speaker to tell you how to get, drive your car in there, either turn it off or do the transmitter. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And next is Patty Armstead. Welcome.
Ladies, happy holidays. Y'all know why I'm here. I came again with a petition of over a hundred residents from Kill Devil Hills in support of lifting the restriction on leashed dogs, not dogs running wild, on our public beach, bringing the number of proponents to over two hundred. While amassing these signatures, I was shocked by how few residents were even aware of these restrictions. Madam Mayor, when we met in May and, um, and at the September meeting, uh, several people seemed to be confused by the board, I mean, the board seemed to be confused about when or why we had these restrictions. Um, I was floored when I read the Virginia Pilot article and learned that this very board expanded the ban June of last year. Uh, through a lot of communication back and forth with the clerk, who I would like to thank personally for her patience and response to all my inquiries, um, I was, I discovered that it was part of chapter ninety-six on seaside regulations offered by Commissioner Hogan and adopted unanimously that made this ban even longer, from May first to September the thirtieth. Um, I was shocked that I had not received notice from the town that this issue was being brought up because I have been on the FOI list for years and I'm very conscientious about keeping up with the news. And while checking my emails, I located this May sixteenth, twenty sixteen email from the town, which gives the incorrect dates on it. So it appears that there's been some confusion among the town as well on this ban. With this amount of confusion among members of our community, how can we expect not to create a bad experience for our visitors renting pet-friendly hotels and cottages? The result may very well be tourists that will not return to Kill Devil Hills, which shrinks our piece of the economic pie. Tourism drives our economic engine and it seems unwise not to lift this ban. Ordinances that are confusing, onerous, and difficult to implement breed contempt for the law. Commissioner Hogan and I are in agreement that ocean rescue should in no way be tasked with anything other than their immense responsibility of keeping people safe in the water. If I'm not mistaken, we only have two animal control officers and it seems like an impossible task to expect them to patrol our beach along with their other duties. They should only be required to respond when there is an issue. None of the other towns appear to be having problems with leashed dogs on the beach. A legitimate argument I have heard regarding this ban is the ignorance of some dog owners, which I contend are a minority. When you have your first child, you are not an expert, but you learn. If people are not good pet parents, it is better for that to be witnessed than hidden. And education is the key and sometimes intervention. As the legislative study that I presented to you last month stated, peer pressure creates better pet owners and reinforces community bonding. The majority treat their pets as family members. They are not relegated to the backyard on a chain, as is evidenced by the growth of the pet industry with current sales over sixty billion annually and the growth expected to be an astonishing twenty-five percent. This is not a piece of the economic pie that Kill Devil Hills can afford to ignore. Another argument I have heard regards some people who are uncomfortable around dogs. We live in a free society and have to deal with some degree of discomfort on a regular basis. Yes, some people, about three percent, suffer from synophobia. Living with fear is not something I would wish on anyone, and the best treatment is desensitization. The flip side of this argument is that animals offer many people comfort who suffer from past traumas, stress, and anxiety. No, I'm not talking about your standard service dog. Companion dogs are shown time and time again to ease tensions, anxiety, fear, lower blood, blood pressure, et cetera. In fact, recent news reports just this past month showed puppies being brought in to sue voters as they waited in long lines at the polls. And dogs were used at airports, uh, to comfort weary travelers over the Thanksgiving rush, which is of course the biggest rush time of all for planes. Um, and I know throughout my life, I have always felt a greater degree of happiness and security when I had a dog by my side. At last month's sign, uh, meeting, signage was mentioned. I emailed the board pictures of those signs, which were just taped over with the new dates, so that tactic could be employed again to make the financial impact on lifting these restrictions negligible. I also sent you a picture of a sign at the Atlantic Street access that gives the false impression that our town is not dog-friendly in the least. In closing, between the past meeting and tonight's, I hope I have adequately addressed the concerns about lifting this ban totally and good reasons to do so. I would like to reiterate that it makes economic sense. It avoids confusion for residents and visitors alike, given our neighboring towns are dog-friendly. It lessens the burden on law enforcement. Socialized, well-exercised dogs are far less likely to become a public nuisance. Peer pressure promotes better pet owners and it addresses the onerous burden on residents and your constituents who work long, late hours in season and find it impossible to work around these restrictive hours. Dog-friendly beaches also enhance the health of our citizens as pet owners are much more likely to exercise. Again, please rescind this ban in its entirety. Thank you for your time and I will pass this over to the board.
Thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
And last for the sign-up list is Barry Nash.
Um, I was gonna speak in favor of dogs on the beach, but she's addressed everything I was gonna say.
Okay, thank you, Barry.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that did not sign up but wishes to speak now? Yes, okay.
My name is Joanne Frazier. Um, I've owned a house down here for about five years and moved here permanently a year ago. Um, she did a awesome job and I agree with everything she said. I do wanna say one thing, my dog is my family and we moved down here together. I had no idea when we first moved here that Kill Devil Hills was the only place that my dog was not going to be allowed on the beach. And to be honest, I wouldn't have moved here. Um, I have gone, my neighbors and I, who are very responsible dog owners, go, uh, frequently to the other beaches. We have never witnessed anything that I would call, um, irresponsible. People that have dogs walk along, our dogs greet each other, um, we, we clean up after our dogs. I've never seen anything that I would consider irresponsible. However, I do see tourists who leave trash all over the beach and we have a day of cleanup here. Um, I see tourists making messes and, and yet those people, you know, aren't in any way reprimanded. For a few irresponsible dog owners, there are, there are always going to be some in any situation. I, I don't think the rest of us should be punished. Um, I love my dog. My dog is my, my family and I totally, um, believe that, um, we need to keep, we need to keep our dogs or allow our dogs on the beach. And one other thing, and this is anecdotal, but I, I can't tell you how many times I've been on the beach and someone's had their dog and they were told to take it away and they're like, um, I won't be coming back to this beach anymore. Um, this, and this has happened time after time. Or friends will come to visit me and we have to go to another beach because of them bringing their dog. Um, I, I agree. I think it definitely can hurt the economy here. Um, as one guy said, when, when he was told, he said, I always believed dogs and beaches go together. So it's, yeah.
Thank you, thanks.
Okay, there's another hand, this is at the back. Welcome.
My name is Jim Scarborough. I'm the maintenance manager, maintenance man and manager of the Kill Devil Hills Pro Wash. Uh, I'm here to, uh, be available for questions if the board has some questions. And I'm here to state what we've done to reduce our noise signature. We've turned down the speaker. We have also closed in the back wall. We've dropped our decibels, ten decibels. We're down to around sixty-two, sixty-one. And those are the, uh, decibels taken by the police officer, not me. I know that a lot of people are upset about the, about the noise. People cannot follow directions. The speaker does wonderful things for the car wash, getting people through the car wash successfully. We do a lot of very good business with a lot of people right here from the outer banks every day, and I know you won't lose sight of that. Uh, the FM, uh, suggestion, I called the area of the district guy that does all, you know, he's the, he's the guy above me in the, in the maintenance world. And I asked him about that and he said he has never heard of that and doesn't know where to go with it. So he said that he's got no information on how to hook up an FM tuner to the car wash. What else? The speaker has actually been there three and a half years. That's how long it's been there. I turned it down as much as humanly possible. We built the wall. Mr. Hatchell has said to me today on the phone, because we've had about six conversations, uh, about all that. He has said to me that he would put in a fence, a shadow box fence across the back of the car wash that would muffle the sound. I don't know how much, you know, you'd have to be a sound engineer to give anybody any numbers about any of that. I have, uh, I've never spoken to anybody who came to the car wash and, and wanted to talk to me about their concerns. They've never come to the car wash. I, I'm there three times a day during the summer and once or twice a day during the winter. It's our busiest car wash. The, uh, the normal car count during the, a winter day is twenty to thirty. We've had some in single digits, uh, the last week. During the summer, those numbers double. They can be on a normal day, fifty to sixty, sixty-five would be a, a normal number. Those are ballpark numbers. Uh, you know, I haven't calculated it for the whole year or anything, but those are normal numbers. Uh, cutting the speaker off, as far as we're concerned, is not a reasonable thing to do at all. There's no reason that that speaker can't operate during the day. You know, uh, my boss, Derek, does not want to cut it off at night, but that is something that could be done. And maybe that would, maybe that would be a halfway point between what's going on. I don't know, that's for your consideration. Do you have any questions for me that you would like to ask?
Um, well, first, I appreciate you coming, especially, I mean, I, I think that's good. It's nice to, to have you here and, um, let us, if you don't mind staying, let us see if there's anyone else that wants to speak at public comment that may have come for that.
Right.
And then, um, and likely some dialogues, if you don't mind. Let's see if anyone else wishes to speak. Um, but thank you very much for, for being here. So it's nice to have that connection.
Okay, a lot of the things I wanted to say, but I, I don't do this well, public speaking, so it's gone.
There is, thank you, Mr. Scarborough. Howard, are you approaching the podium again?
No, he's leaving.
Oh, he's leaving, okay. All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak at this public comment time? Yes, welcome, Eddie.
My name's Eddie Goodrich. Um, Mike Robinson's here with me to represent the developer of the new Marriott Town Suites. And we'd like to ask the commissioners, if you will, to revisit the fee structure that's being charged, uh, world impact fees. It's four thousand dollars per unit, which is the same cost of a single-family home, three or four bedrooms. Uh, the fees being charged would be the same as if someone would come in and build a subdivision of a hundred and fifty-two houses and that's really not what's happening. It's a new type of hotel, uh, new not only to Kill Devil Hills, but, well, actually just developed over the past, um, decade probably. It's an extended stay hotel with, um, kitchenettes. It'll be without a doubt, it has, it has a breakfast room, it'll have a restaurant on the oceanfront. Um, I think if you look at water usage, which Mike knows more about than I do, obviously, I don't really think it fits into the ordinance, as it should. And I'd like for you, if you will, to revisit, revisit it again. The fees are four thousand dollars per unit, it's a hotel room. And it's not three or four bedroom house. And Mike wants to say a few things. He's done a little research on, uh, other missed factors.
Yeah, real quickly, the, uh, I think the crux of the matter is, is the wording of budget item number two, which outlines the, the impact fees for hotels, like units. There's hotel, motel, campground, assisted living, and nursing home require one initial hookup fee of the four thousand dollars per habitable room, or, or one initial hookup fee per three habitable rooms. What we would like, what we would ask the board to consider is what, what is the trigger for the or? Is, you know, is hotel room or hotel room? We, we don't understand why Mr. Patel asked us to come by and see if we could reexamine this fee. The, uh, we looked at fees associated with impacts for hotel rooms in other jurisdictions. Dare County is six hundred and twenty-five dollars per unit. Kitty Hawk, Duck, the same because they're under Dare County. Naxxet is fifteen hundred dollars per unit. And it just felt like the four thousand dollar per unit was, was often towards high relative to other jurisdictions. I understand there's different, and we also looked at Curta County, which charges flat-rate fees based on meter size. If we built this project in Curta County, it would only be a seven thousand dollar impact fee. And we're talking about a six hundred, eight thousand dollar impact fee for a hotel alone on this project. So that's our request.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak at this public comment time? Okay, we will move then to response to public comments. So for those who spoke either for or against the dogs changing the ordinance, we have that as item number two under old business, so we will just follow up with that item at that point. Um, then the others speaking on the car wash. Um, 'cause I, I just wanna double-check my notes. I think everyone else was either related to the car wash or then this last item. Is that, my notes correct? Okay, um, so again, I appreciate everyone who spoke. And it's obvious that those of you living nearby, this is incredibly stressful. And despite the efforts that have been made thus far by, um, the car wash, it's still a problem. And I also do appreciate very much Mr. Scarborough coming out, 'cause it shows that they do still want to try to do something to, to make this right and come to some type of, of compromise. do something to, to make this right and come to some type of, of compromise. Um, Mr. Scarborough, let me ask you this question, since you, you brought the topic up. If, um, if they were able to provide you all some information about the FM transmitter, since apparently...
Buy it right off of Amazon. They're about a hundred bucks.
Yeah, since Jeff has one that they're using right now that's working right there in their neighborhood. Would that be something you could get that information and share?
Was he willing to do it?
That piece of equipment has to tie into our car wash computer. And
Tie it?
If my area, if my, it's not that easy. It's, it's not...
Hold on, let's not get in a debate. We'll work with you.
I, I asked, I did not ask the people who manufactured the machine, but the guy who installed it, who works on it. I asked him. And now there is something that I didn't say. There's a possibility that, I don't know if each sound that the speaker makes is able to cut it on or cut it off. I, I don't have that answer. But I can get that answer. And if the beeping is the biggest problem, you know, uh, then it's possible I could cut the beeping off. But I just don't believe that just cutting off the beeping is going to appease these dogs. I mean, she said she wants the whole thing cut off, period. Uh, but I mean, that is something that would possibly, I might, I can look into it. And I, and I will. You know, I, I want to find a resolution.
Um, and to get decisions made at the car wash, am I correct that you're kind of the local spokesperson, but then you take it, sorry, to the next level, who, like a decision-making level? Or how does that?
All right. Well, Mr. Hatchell was busy enough for about three people. That's why he doesn't return phone calls or emails and that kind of thing. So yes, I handle everything that's, that's low level, uh, you know. But when you start modifying how the car wash works or money, big money, you know, over a thousand, fifteen hundred dollars, but then I go to the office and then to him. But I mean, I've got the inside track on all that. And I can get that done.
Okay. Well, let's do this for this, for the sake of time. What I'd like to, I'll be...
That is fine.
What I'd like to do is, is make sure we have your contact information. Um, so if you don't mind, Harriet can, ever, Clark Taylor can get that. So easiest way for her number to get ahold of you and email as well, if you, if you email. Um, and then I myself and a couple of staff members will schedule a meeting. If we can get it done either later this week or next week to really start trying to explore other options if that would work.
Okay.
Um, are you local here or are you?
I am.
Okay, great.
So my question was, kind of to Mr. Scarborough, was if it functioned all those years prior to three and a half years ago, when y'all put the speaker system in, why did we have to put the speaker system in? Because I've lived there fifteen years and it only started, like you said, about three, three and a half years ago. So if it functioned just fine before that, why did we have to put the speaker in to begin with?
Well, obviously, that's when the, I guess, from here, but that's when it became so much worse.
I had no problem. The blower isn't a problem for me. It is the beeping, the please drive forward, your car is now being coated with an undercoating, please drive forward, beep, 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 back up.
Back up. Okay.
All the time.
Well, let us do this. Let us, I get it. I mean, I hear. And again, the fact that Mr. Scarborough is here.
So happy he is here. At least somebody has stepped up.
Because that's a tough position to walk into and then even speak at three...
Well, I'm really disappointed. Well, I'm just disappointed Mr. Hatchell couldn't be a man and step up himself, but whatever.
But we will reach out to you. And again, thank you.
Just two real quick points on what Mr. Scarborough said. It's over fifteen hundred dollars. Well, the loss of property value far exceeds fifteen hundred dollars. And amount of people going through that car wash, plus in, in the summer, they could pay for it five times over. And I guess my biggest question is, in terms of the Kill Devil Hills noise code statute, I mean, all three of these, it goes against what is reasonable. And I do not feel like putting a fence up is going to solve anything. It's not going to solve anything. You can hear that thing. You can flip, you can have a fifty-foot fence. You're still going to hear it.
So what we need, what we need to do is, is take all this information and get guidance from our attorney, as well as, as have a meeting with Mr. Scarborough and see where we can go with this. We'll try to do it as quickly as possible because I know every day that goes by, it's annoying for you guys. I get it. But we will, we definitely need guidance because we do it from the attorney, because you're, you're quoting things in the ordinance that seem like it gives us some strength to do something. But we need to work through them with that and then communicate that with, with the owners. So, um, let's, uh, we'll reach out to me at the meeting and then we will keep, we will provide you all that were here tonight and speak and spoke on this, an update, um, by next week of where we are at that time.
And here, I'll make a note. I'll start reviewing town code and I'll come with a little memo. And hopefully that'll help, um, help with the meeting. Absolutely.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I feel like also dogs being on Kill Devil Hills beaches would hurt the tourist business tremendously. I think you would see less people on the beach if dogs allowed because tourists don't want to be around dogs when they come to beach.
Okay. Okay. We're going to talk about dogs in just a, a few more minutes. So, okay. So we are moving on then, no, we're not. Eddie, sorry. The other topic that came up at, at public comment, um, the fee structure. So, um...
Let me know how the vote turns out.
I would, we need information. We need information to, to be a, look at this and try to address it.
Yeah, I bet. I think it was mine. What information he's already gathered and then we'll, um, put that together for the board.
Okay. Okay. So I'll staff will look into that for us, provide information. So then we can look at it. See if we have addressed it. Okay.
Yeah, and I'll be happy to, to come and show you what I've got.
Okay. Thank you. Great. Thank you. Okay. So we will move on now then to old business. This will be item number one under old business. This will be the second vote on proposed amendment to Beach Nursery Municipal Service District. Um, Debbie, can't you?
Yes, ma'am. This is the second vote. Um, as you recall, at your last meeting, you did the first vote to, um, remove these properties from the MSD. Um, it's an ordinance that reduces the town of Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina beach erosion. Excuse me, I'm sorry. Apologize. Um, it removes the properties from the Municipal Service District. Um, properties removed as a result of the consent judgment. Properties due to be removed by adoption of the ordinance and map conflicting the properties and a map conflicting the revised MSD and a motion being ordered.
So this is the second, excuse me, the ordinance in our packet as well as the four exhibits. Any questions? Comments? Emotion?
I'm going to make a motion that we approve the proposed budget amendment to Beach Nursery Municipal Service District.
Um, okay. The, specifically, we're looking at the second vote on the ordinance. The ordinance and the four exhibits, as presented in the packet.
So you want me to approve the ordinance rather than the amendment?
It's the, it's the ordinance amending the Beach Nursery Municipal Service District as presented. Okay.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the ordinance reducing the town of Kill Devil Hills, North Carolina beach erosion control and flood hurricane work Municipal Service District.
Uh, motion for...
A second.
Eddie, further discussion? Others in favor, please say no saying aye.
Aye.
Give me a aye. Okay. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Next, under old business, is the options for dogs on the beach. Um, certainly, as we first visited this back in July, um, there were lots of opinions on, on both sides. Um, I, I pulled the minutes out from that meeting to review those and review the comments, um, because we had said, we actually concluded that meeting, um, and at that point, because there was not an overwhelming majority one way or the other, and, and I had shared that how this first came about, Patty, Patty and I met and, um, I didn't, I was not anticipating the opposition that there was. Um, and so for the July meeting, we had heard quite a bit of, of opposition for us making any change. And the board concluded that meeting by stating that we would look at revisiting this item, but specifically, we were looking at revisiting the timeline because at that point, we concluded there actually, there was no interest from any member of the Board of Commissioners to allow dogs on the beach all day long during the summer season. That's where we left things. Um, and then since then, we had the public forum and, um, of course, Patty came to that meeting and spoke again. And since then, we've been receiving emails again for and, and against. Um, we also received the first, um, petition, list of petition. And that is included in the packet where, um, we had asked the clerk for some assistance and looking at the names on that and addresses on the petition. Um, because while certainly input from around the area and others, you know, we take that, but I, our greatest obligation is to the folks that live and pay taxes in Kill Devil Hills. That's our greatest obligation. So we wanted to dissect that list to try to look at as fairly as possible who we were hearing, um, opposition of, you know, don't change anything to open your ordinance and allow, um, dogs on beach at, at greater times or all the time, as, as some folks have advocated. Um, so Mary, who's not here tonight, Harriet's with us tonight, um, but Mary had spent a considerable amount of time, and I know she shared the information she, she'd worked on with, with the board. Um, you know, I think I shared this before, I know I did before when we talked about this topic, that dogs on the beach has come to this board on a number of occasions. And I say this board, but not necessarily us, because it's come a number of times before we were seated. And, um, as I shared before, Commissioner Pitt had, had said, be prepared. At some point during your term, dogs on the beach is going to come back up. And bless his heart, he's sitting up there laughing at me right now in heaven going, I told you, Sheila, this is going to come up. And people understandably are very passionate on one side or the other. They have strong feelings about this topic. Um, and I'm struggling, I will tell you all, I'm struggling with this one personally. Um, I have a dog. We have, um, he's nine months old now. And the type of dog that he is, I won't take him to the beach because it would take me probably three years to get all the sand out of his fur. So, but, you know, I, I don't look at this just for what I would do with my pet. It's, it's what would, what did the town population, the folks that are living here and paying taxes. And the reason I think it's struck, it's such a struggle for me now with this topic is it's not an overwhelming majority on the other side. Um, from the emails that we get and the, um, the folks that have spoken, it's not an overwhelming majority. So for, for that, it, it doesn't make it an easy decision for me to say, clearly, this is where we, we need to go. Um, I do know in the July meeting, when we were talking about that, this, and, and even then, we were going into it, several of us, thinking that there was, there was more support to change it. But actually, when we tallied everything at that meeting, it was not. It was two to one in opposition of changing. And that's why we said, well, we're not going to change it as far as lifting the, um, the ordinance, but that maybe we would look at expanding the timeframe, making it more of the Memorial Day to Labor Day or looking at the hours. So I provide a little bit of kind of where I am, as well as some of the history, um, just to lay it out, to, if it helps facilitate any of our discussion, great. Otherwise, it also just is for those in attendance and those listening later to, to have some of that perspective. So I will pause for a moment and ask comments or thoughts from any of you all.
I'm not in favor of making any changes to the current law.
I don't have a dog.
I have a dog in this fight.
I have dogs. Um, I mean, I wouldn't, I don't take mine to the beach, but I would be in favor of, of lifting it completely, staying completely, making us consistent with all the other beaches.
And I have a dog and I take my dog to the beach frequently. And, um, she loves, she's a Labrador Retriever and loves to swim. So, um, but I'm, like you, I'm, I'm struggling with this because the folks that are, that have an opinion on this are so, so strong in their opinions. It's either all or nothing. I mean, it really, it, it's amazing. It's, it's like we're back with the chickens again. It's, it's really amazing to me how passionate, um, everyone is. But it's because they're, they're our, our family. And that's, and so I do, I do understand that. Um, but, um, at the same time, I, I understand that, you know, it, we're not, there's no way we're going to make everybody happy with this. There's, it's just not going to be possible. Um, so it's, it's, it's really sad to sit here right this minute because there's just no way to make everybody happy. And, and although I do have a dog and I do take her to the beach frequently, um, I can say honestly, I, I kind of went into this thinking I really don't have a dog in this fight because I don't, it doesn't, I'm not here representing myself. I'm here representing the majority. And, um, and I don't have time to take my dog to the beach anyway in the, for the days that this wouldn't apply to me. But, um, so I, you know, it's just going to really depend on, you know, what y'all say and where the numbers fall.
I mean, I, I would like to, to lift the ban to be, uh, along with the other towns. But, you know, compromise is always good.
Well, as you said, Mary, there's, uh, opinion on both sides and it's pretty much even or depending on which meeting, if one way or the other. I don't think, if it is fifty-fifty, probably not exactly fifty-fifty. But if it were anywhere in that ballpark, I don't think that's a consensus for change. I think if there was going to be a change, there would have to be, would have to be heavily weighing one way or the other, or no change, or heavily weighing who was making the change.
Is this something we can put on a vote in the town?
Yeah, I do.
We asked that question.
Just you on it. Because it's, it's not a, um, it's a large majority on either side. Um, I did look into last week and consulted with the town manager and, and they did some research, saying, is this something that we can even put on future as a referendum? And that way you really get the people's vote on this because, but unfortunately, you can't. There's, we can't just ask for this to be on a ballot in the future. Um, you'd have to get this basically legislative approval.
I was just wondering, I went on your website and I saw, um, some of the petitions and how they were, um, confirmed. And then I just saw a couple of, um, emails. Is there any way for the public to know, um, the emails and the phone calls, um, for the public to have, to know how that's coming down?
The emails are public information, yes.
We print all of those and they're...
Where, how do I get those for the numbers?
Um, contact Harriet.
Okay.
Um, now, phone, the phone calls, I'm not...
Phone calls don't fall under Freedom of Information Act, I don't believe.
Record it. But I mean, the phone puzzle of what you're talking about came to the board, you know.
Right. And, and if, I, I mean, I know, as in the case with the chickens, I mean, you can probably, if you, if you look at my emails from that time, I mean, I know when I was emailing back and forth with Sheila and probably even with staff at that point in time, there, I documented how many, you know, how many phone calls I had gotten. And I, I got, I didn't... you know, how many phone calls I had gotten. And I didn't just get phone calls, I had people come to my house and knock on my door.
Oh, that'd be my next tactic.
And the emails, some of the emails having the same issue with, were not being able to confirm where the people were from. And Mary did follow up on those, trying to get some additional information.
Well, there's a lot of renters, it's difficult to check by tax code and property.
But, you know, street address, this is what she was looking for.
I think you're also, if you pass this ordinance, you're opening yourself up to people wanting to bring other animals down to the beach. And I also believe that you, if you don't want a dog that came to kill Devil Hills Beach and leaving, you'll end up with a lot of strays on the Kill Devil Hills Beach.
All right, so as far as, we're all over the board.
Yeah.
And.
I just, if what you're saying is that the count was maybe 50/50 or very close, and she just presented you with an additional.
Two hundred.
An additional hundred signatures in favor, that would, in my mind, that would tilt the scale.
Well, we would need to, just like we did the last one. Last one was over a hundred, and I think it was only.
It was about forty-six, and some of them were not confirmed. These, I can guarantee you, there may be nine signatures that are not Kill Devil Hills. And they were all taken on Kill Devil Hills property. And, you know, I don't know what, you know, how much more I can do, you know, unless I'm going to open up a website and go online, and, you know, I have done about as much as me personally can do, but I don't, and looking at the meetings of the minutes from July, I didn't see that much opposition. I think you only had three or four, maybe five people at the most that spoke against it. So I'm not seeing, that's why I asked about your emails, because I have not seen the vast number of these so-called antis, as I have the pros.
Well, those emails were.
Yeah, I'm not seeing that either.
People against the dogs.
Yeah, I mean, where are these?
Okay.
Well, there's a few people, and they don't.
Yeah, there's a couple.
I'm going to get us back in. Normally, we don't have exchange during, once we get to the board, but I was trying to be accommodating, but we need to move forward. So, and I don't want the debate back and forth. So back to our discussion, as far as what's the flavor, because we're all over the board again. Probably what I'm leaning towards, if I was throwing out, where I would be, would be trying to make a, what I would turn compromise, and that theory, we're not going to make everybody happy for sure, which would be to be consistent with what we were stating in July, which was Memorial Day to Labor Day. And so our peak season, basically, is we're still then keeping the regulations in place. But instead of having it as broad as it was doing now, I feel that it still protects those that have the concerns, it gives some concessions to those who want more time. Again, it's not going to appease everybody. So it reduces it by forty percent for the timeline, so.
I think you made a good point before, looking at the minutes from one of the previous meetings, is we never intended to look at it as a ban, or as a lifting ban, we were just looking at it at a time. And I think that's where the discussion was going in the beginning, and it kind of morphed into lifting ban. So, but I'm okay with the change.
And that's easy to remember, so it won't be hard. I'm just trying to think about staff, too. It just keeps changing things, and it gets crazy for people to remember things.
Yeah, I mean, and every time we make a change, we need to communicate the change. And yes, I do think the signs can be fixed, I mean, that's not a hard task to do. But it's getting it out and communicating it.
Do you want a motion?
We are. You guys ready for a motion? Okay, okay, a motion would be in order.
I'll make a motion that we modify the current animal ordinance to allow for animals on the beach in, before Memorial Day and after Labor Day. So the current ban would only be from Memorial Day to Labor Day.
But we would still keep the hours in, because they're not banned completely between Memorial Day and Labor Day. We would still keep the accessible hours.
Yeah, then we change with each month.
It's your second, it's the second ordinance.
Second option?
Yes. Yeah, we just go to one sharp date.
Our minimum days for record minutes there is.
So that's what it was a year, a year ago.
You know what they do.
Okay, so we are, so basically, when adopting, the changes is presented in versions in the packet. There's a motion? Okay, any further discussion? Debbie, you're clear on where we are?
Yes, ma'am, the second option between Memorial Day and Labor Day of each year.
All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Okay. All right. Next item, we're moving on then to new business. Item number one is appointments. The first appointment this evening is to the personnel board. Sue Kelly's term on the personnel board expires in January of 2017. She has expressed an interest to be reappointed. With that, motion would be in order.
I move that we reappoint Sue Kelly to the personnel board.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Next is appointment to the Board of Adjustment. The regular term vacancy on the board has occurred from Richard Bear's death. We have two alternate members, Kevin Cox and Ronald Seidman, that are interested in being appointed. We also had an application from Jason Self.
Yeah, I was looking at the applications, and of the three, Kevin Cox and Mr. Seidman and Mr. Self, Kevin's had his in the longest, he's the earliest dated application. I would lean in that direction.
Would we then need another alternate?
That's, I made a note to that. If we were to appoint Kevin as the regular term vacancy, could we then also make an appointment of Jason Self to the alternate position? Okay. So with that, would you like to make a motion?
That wouldn't have to come with another meeting.
Right, we could do them both today.
Okay, yes, fine.
We do that in one motion?
Yeah, it's a motion.
That's a motion, okay. The motion is to appoint Kevin Cox to the regular term vacancy and to appoint Jason Self as an alternate member. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. All right, next under new business is item number two, recommended amendment to town code to replace chapter 110, business licensing. Debbie, it looks like this is really just kind of standardizing.
Yes, ma'am, this is, as we discussed with our budget, the General Assembly had appealed the authority from municipalities to collect privileged license, privileged license taxes effective back in 2004. But in 2005, however, a municipality may regulate and license occupation, businesses, trades, profession, and forms of amusement or entertainment, and prohibit those that may be in order to public health, welfare, safety, order, or convenience. So this is basically allowing us to charge a reasonable regulatory fee to obtain the license. And a motion would be in order.
Comments, questions? Motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the amendment to the town code to replace chapter 110, business licensing.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number three, under new business, is proposed amendment to chapter 50.32, garbage service and bulk trash collections.
Steve's coming to the podium, if you have any questions. This kind of clip, just sort of cleans up this ordinance a little, makes it a little bit easier to understand. Do you have anything else to add with that?
Bolding what we needed to pay attention to in the changes.
Happy holidays.
Thank you, what a gift. But yeah, it's just really putting it, tidying the ordinance up a little bit.
Now, I would like to say that before the meeting, one of our constituents approached me and questioned, I talked to Steve about this, by the way, one part where it says recycle, recyclable materials which are prohibited, including cardboard and paper. And he brought up the fact that you see so many of these bags with debris and paper bags. And Steve said that's biodegradable, it's for that purpose. So it's not considered paper in the sense that it's somebody's TV box, or stack of newspapers, or something.
Yes, we prefer the biodegradable crap paper bags, because they can go right through the mulching process, and we don't, we're not required any extra handling. When people put plastic bags out, we've got to carry that to recycle center, open everything by hand. And so those are actually preferred, the paper bags, when you're dealing with yardways.
A motion would be in order?
I'll make a motion we approve amendment to chapter 50.32, garbage service, bulk trash collections.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Any others? All those in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to Commissioner's agenda. Mayor President?
Yeah, I'm here, everything.
All right, well, we will move on to Mayor's agenda. In your packet this evening is the proposed 2017 meeting schedule. Not sure if you all had a chance to review the calendar and see if these dates work for you.
Forward to the future.
Well, unless, I mean, at this point, it's if anything jumps off, then we would change it. If it doesn't, obviously, we've had to make some meeting changes before. The sooner we know, the better. But we've seemed to work really well together to make changes as necessary.
I think one change I would recommend is change in the December meeting to the 12th, my birthday.
We can have an annual celebration.
Keep up with traditions, I'll like. I was sworn in on my birthday the first time.
That's right, it was.
Calendar days, so. All right, well, if we're okay with this.
Other than that, I'm fine.
Really? Are you going to make a motion with that change? Okay, then a motion would be in order to adopt the calendar as proposed?
I'll move.
I'll second.
All in favor, please signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Also, in the packet is the Board Committee Member Appreciation Reception. We've done this for the past two years, and proposing that we do it again this February. It's a Wednesday evening, February the 8th, and if we agree to the date, then staff will work on the logistics and plan, and then invitations and so on and so forth. Historically, I think we've done it either four to six, or four thirty to six thirty, can't remember, but we can look back.
Just shooting for a date.
That date, do you think that date's okay, or, if not?
I'm going to be out.
Okay.
I'm out the second through the ninth.
Okay.
What about the 15th?
And it doesn't have to be on a Wednesday, if there's a different date. It looks like your games are Monday, Wednesday. Well, maybe we want to not do a Monday.
Although, there's not, was on the 15th, that's.
Maybe 13th?
All right, let's see. We're into February, well, the 13th, I think we just said that we're going to have a meeting. Yeah, we're going to have.
Did you say there's no games on the 15th?
What about the 14th? Oh, that's Valentine's Day.
Although, there is a game on that day, but we're not.
15 works for me.
I think I'm probably.
What about 16?
I would be back on the 16th. 16th, okay. Oh, you're June, right, we're talking February.
Okay, I was on February. Yeah, what day is that?
We're talking 16th, Thursday.
Oh, no, that's not going to work. Okay, that's all right.
They may actually make it to the tournament.
Well, there's no rule that it has to be, hold on, is that going on for?
Just one more day.
What about into the next week, the 23rd? Over that whole week, what about? What about the 28th of February, that Tuesday?
We're just barely getting any heartbeat.
It doesn't have to be in February, but, but does that work for everybody, February 28th? Okay, so. All right, so by consensus, we say February 28th will work.
Yes.
And let's put it on our calendars now and block the date.
And that's a Tuesday, that is a Tuesday, not a Wednesday.
Correct. Avoid the sports complex. Okay, great. One other item. We are going to celebrate a birthday. Just singing.
Happy birthday to you, happy birthday to you, happy birthday dear my.
And Sue.
Happy birthday to you.
And it's gluten free.
Kenny.
Well, to our wonderful staff team.
Thought that was the deal, was going to be in the shape of a dog, but.
You know what, we can carve that out real quickly.
Truly nice, big, big pack, gluten free brownie. They're quite welcome to some, they're very good, by the way. A lot of gluten freaks who visit, brownies.
All right, and that is all I have this evening. Well, thanks staff as well, so. Well, but it's not scheduled, eleven. Okay, we'll move to town managers' agenda.
The only thing I'd like to comment on is if you could look in the back, which is why you didn't get your cake back there, but up here. This is from our puppy drive for the SPCA, not just puppies, cats and dogs, which will all go over to the SPCA. And this isn't all of it, this is just what was collected here. So, and the Toys for Tots, I think that has already gone. And the Toys for Tots, I think that has already gone, there was a huge amount of that as well, so just thank everybody that participated and thank our staff that worked very hard on it.
And actually, Debbie, I, I'll tag onto your agenda because I meant to mention it in mine, I had the distinct pleasure of coming out this weekend for the festivities here, and the staff did an amazing job. You would have thought this was winter, Winter Wonderland inside this room, I mean, you would, how they transformed it back to a Commissioner's Meeting Room as quickly, but, you know, Santa display with presents, they have beautiful pictures of the boys with Santa, but, you know, treats set up here, I mean, just the whole room, they had on all the TV screens, they had it looking like fireplace wood burning, and it's just so, so nice. And then they did sleigh rides, but it was a whole cart of some sort around the pond, and, I mean, the line literally was waiting to get on here into the building and then the other way going back out trying to get in to see Santa, so just great attendance and so well appreciated by those in the community. Today, I was getting emails and text messages of people sharing their pictures from the weekend, so for all the staff that had a hand in this, please extend...
Sure, yes, ma'am, thank you.
...appreciation, but just top notch, lots of energy.
Even had Elvis in the building.
That's right. So very special, special evening.
Great, thank you, ma'am.
We'll move to Town Attorney's, Town Attorney's Agenda.
Happy Birthday. I'll say that on the record. Beach Nurse, I'll give one update there, so good news, we of course moved forward and filed our legal action to go out against the owners who had not provided voluntary easements, and that hopefully, they haven't been returned yet, but out of the four we had to file, we've received word from three, and they're going to relinquish easements, I think, so I believe we're only dealing with, with one sliver of oceanfront out of the, whatever we had to mail out, so it's really good, so it looks like it'll be a non-contested issue, so.
Thank you for all your hard work on that.
Thank you.
Okay, Debbie, the consent agenda?
Yes, ma'am, three items on the consent agenda, the minutes from the November 14th, 2016 meeting, the second is an in behind service agreement with the disc golf, with advanced tree service for a retail value of $15,000 in tree removal services, for the right to sponsor the parking lot at the town disc golf. This is coming together slowly, but definitely coming together. And then lastly, interfaith community outreach property tax exemption, and this is a nonprofit organization that has applied for and then approved for a property tax exemption by the Nair County Board of Commissioners, and approval of the consent agenda record Kill Devil Hills approval of the exemption as well. Staff recommends approval of the consent agenda as presented, and a motion would be in order.
Thank you, any questions? Motion?
Make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll second.
All those in favor, please signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Typically, we do have a second time set aside for public comment, it's not really written on the agenda, but we'll still honor it, somehow I overlooked it as well. Is there anyone that wishes to speak before we adjourn our meeting? Everybody ready to go for dinner? Yes, sir?
One quick question, would it help if we got a Realtor or two to go on the record to you when you're researching the town code about how impossible it would be to sell a property?
I can't hear you, young man, you're going to have to come closer.
I honestly, I, I don't think any of us doubt the credibility or the testimony you all sharing it.
I'm just saying, would that, would that be helpful if we had it written from a couple Realtors that it's impossible to sell a property?
From my perspective, from what I'm going to be looking at, no. Now, for consideration for the board, maybe, but that, that's entirely up to you guys. For, for me, it's, it's not going to, I mean, I'm going to be looking at it from an entirely legal standpoint, now, if I'm going to review the ordinance, I'm going to take, look at its definition, and if there's violations, then we'll move forward, so, but, but not, I suppose, the, the community aspect, the effect on value, property values and things of that nature is really not what I'm going to be assessing.
All right, I just had a good talk with Mr. Scarborough at the parking lot, but one other guy came out and had a great suggestion, which I'm not up to speed with it with my phone, but the FM transmitter thing, I know that works because I, I've seen that a dev, he's talking about they could get an app, they could get an app for people, you know, for their phones, which, like I said, I'm not up to speed with that, but apparently they could probably do that, it's another option for them.
Well, I, I think you've got the board serious about doing something with this, and we really have two avenues. One is a legal avenue, and, and we will explore that, and then it gives us the parameters legally we have for enforcement. The other avenue is trying to come up with compromise and concessions and working with the property owner, so that's what, we'll start that avenue later this week or beginning of next week while we're also exploring the legal avenue, so get somewhere with this, but it's good to have, that there, there are options out there, so. Any, anything else? A motion to adjourn?
Sub moved.
Second.
All those in favor, please signal a saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you.